Before we get fully up and running, I'll just say that a lot of today's meeting is going to be around our requirements or needs for response planning with respect to the virus. So I think you may have seen the task Excel spreadsheet that I sent out. It's got two or three things that are high, but I think today our primary deck sort of starts back plays into it. It was actually an Excel spreadsheet.
Did you send it, Dina?
Do you know? Okay, if you didn't, if you didn't see it-
You didn't tell me to, but that's okay.
If you didn't, if you didn't see it, Ben, it kind of, I can send it to Ben.
I got it here.
It basically looks like, it basically looks like this. And up top-
Oh, I don't have it.
It's just-
Thank you.
It's just a list of- Oh, I see.
I'm special paper.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
So it's just a list of, it's just a to-do list, folks.
Okay.
And putting it in Excel allows us to sort once things get done. But up top of the list, what I put was that the priority is high and urgent for COVID-19. So most of this meeting today will focus on that. But with that said, I have some idea of what's maybe number one or two on Steve's to-talk-about list. Can we do it without talking about the company? Have you learned anything since we spoke a couple days ago?
Yeah, I did, and they're, I mean, they are-
But can we talk about it a little bit without talking about the, just try to not mention the name of the company?
Do you want pictures?
Well, you just tell me what you, you just tell me what-
Well, I took care of it.
Tell me, okay.
You know, they came and they picked the truck up and they're gonna repair it, obviously.
So they did, so the executive summary is, is that the 2010, I really never scratched off my, what year is it? The red truck that doesn't have the wing, the smaller of the-
It's looking amazing.
Yeah, the smaller of the, the smaller of the truck was in for service and fell off of the lift.
Oh, great.
And they didn't tell me.
Incurred damage. Steve didn't know about it. Truck got picked up and Steve learned about it third-hand, third-party, if you will. Once again, so we don't have to go with it non-public. Can you describe, if you will, how they explained that this could have happened? That they, or that they think that-
Well, I did, I asked, I mean, I understand stuff falls off lifts, that happens. But them just not telling me and trying to hide the damages after all the business that we've given them, to me, that's unacceptable. They're gonna, they came and picked it up, they're going to fix it. They had a bunch of excuses, like, "Oh, we thought somebody told you," and, "Oh, then the other one was, oh, we didn't know there was any damage on it." And so those are the excuses that I got. Either way, they're gonna fix it. And obviously, I don't know what you guys are doing with the new 250, but obviously, I wouldn't recommend that company.
Well, well, next time when we got more time, we'll go with it non-public and we'll, with you here, and we'll talk about it and decide as far as whether we should work with them anymore.
Yeah, it's hard, it's getting limited, it's hard to find a company that's local, that's-
What?
No, I was just gonna say, you're talking about the maintenance truck and it'd be nice if we could get that, and I've already done some. So I wanted to talk to you guys about that today.
Okay? But we can, but we can do that without Steve, unless you want, unless you want-
Yes, nothing to do with me.
Doesn't have to do with the highway.
No.
Okay.
I've got some nice rubber neckers there.
Yeah, gotta be careful, everybody's got a cellphone.
Okay, what else, Steve? I know that was-
The other one was the R&amp;D paving.
Yep.
I told them what option we chose and they were hoping that you would sign the contract. You know, I just take and, I don't have to have it today, but just, they were hoping, they're trying to do their schedule, obviously, and they were hoping mid-June. And I said, "Well, I'm hoping that the wooden bridge is supposed to be done by then and, and hopefully, the other part will be done by then." It's supposed to be done by end of May, the other, the bypass, that's what he said, so I'm hoping to mid-June have the payers come.
So, tying into that, so yeah, we'll take a look at this and-
It's just, it's the first one, Kevin, it's obviously the cheaper option. So you'll see it's the first page, it's the one that's like $284,000.
Yeah, I think we voted to do that at the last meeting.
Yes, we voted for the, yeah, we voted for the cheaper option.
Yeah, so I think we'll just look at the terms and conditions and if it fits.
Yep.
Right, Dina? Yep? And if it fits, we can execute it. Let me ask the board. This is sort of leading into if we don't meet as a group or as often for some reason with the COVID-19. So the 284, 365 number is the number that we voted and approved on. If the terms and conditions are good, acceptable, and Dina says are acceptable, will the board allow the chair to sign the contract? So we can move forward, so it's on their book, certainly after your review? Just asking. I think we're gonna have to do more of this in the future, I think we're gonna have to do more of this in the future, so.
So this is first page. Yeah, I'll move to allow the chair to sign 284, 365, sign the contract with R&amp;D paving.
Yeah, like I said, we'll have, we'll have Dina take a look at the terms and conditions, make sure it's all up to stuff. And then that's, that's good, then we're good. Steve?
I don't know if Ben wants to.
Would you like to?
I second that, yeah.
Okay, I'll a favor?
Aye.
Okay, one, two, three. Thank you. So, we did get an email yesterday from Mike Hanson, and-
Yeah, I saw, yep.
Yeah, and I think he said middle of April.
Yep.
So now the question is, do we hold off Dennis to get the bridge in?
How's the bridge gonna affect Dennis?
Because it got shut.
Oh, so you're gonna have people, yeah. They still can't use that old road while he's constructing, finishing the new one? Why can't they? So we could keep it open?
They used it all winter.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know? I wouldn't hesitate on that bridge at all, especially with his schedule. If they can use the old road, why not?
I would say Dennis off. I would say get it done.
Go ahead, Ben.
Get it done.
Yeah. It certainly achieves the one goal of getting the bridge installed before we pave.
No, don't, don't waste any time.
And I think we're, as what Mike said in his email, he said since the winter was so mild, he actually got five bridges installed-
All right.
Ahead of time, so he's, he's feeling pretty good about his schedule.
Yeah.
So let's just think for a second. Any complications with both projects at the same time?
Not if people are using the old road.
Road is open and there's nothing to complain about.
Well, it's gonna get a little, it's gonna get a little bit clogged up. Shawna, you hang in there for a second on this question, so just in case you got some thought. So did you hear we're thinking about, you know, doing the Hughesworth Bridge and having Dennis work, you know, if he's- So it's just a, you know, should we, you know, really, April's just, his time dial is two, three weeks away. I'm not even sure if Dennis is gonna be starting that fast, if it's, it's gonna break-
I wouldn't be surprised if he didn't get here till May, so that bridge may be done by the time.
Don't know, but, you know, maybe we, if it's the, if it's the right thing to do, maybe we get the bridge installed. Because I can see where there'll be a lot of, he'll be busy, still moving stuff, moving equipment, moving material, up and down, Dennis will be, right? And that it might be helpful, just talking here, might be helpful for Hanson to have access coming in from the north too, instead of coming all the way through the south.
He's gonna bring us heavy equipment across that terrible road? I don't know, I'm just, I'm just saying, Ben.
I mean, Hanover may, may let us through.
Depending on what he's bringing, I'd be a little sketchy about Fisher Bridge.
Might be sketchy about-
I'd just make sure we talk to Mike that he has contact with, that he has contact with the Hanover Road agent, so-
If you know how heavy-
Get permission to come in from the south.
I think those guys need to work it out.
Right.
We don't need to second-guess them. We've been waiting on the bridge, we've been waiting on the road. I think we heard Dennis say he's not bringing down his trailer, his RV.
End of, end of April, he said, he was, was gonna start till the end of April.
So I think it could just work out very nicely, or it might get a little confusing.
What about working hours, we just limited it to local traffic only? They were working out from eight to five. Local, that would limit the stuff that Dennis and the bridge, that Dennis has to deal with. The bridge will be closed.
I was gonna say, once he closed the bridge, then there's gonna be zero traffic.
Right.
Yeah. Except for local anyway, or local delays.
What's the length of time he expects to put the bridge in?
He said middle of April.
Oh, how long?
Oh, I think, I think he said about a month, all of, I take, Tommy takes the other one out and gets all finished. I think, I think it's gonna be less than that, but I think he said maximum, if I remember correctly. So I think what I heard, though, is that regardless, it's gonna have to come in from the south. And so Mike needs to get with Hanover to see if they'll allow him to bring it in from the south.
And then Mike will have to put the bond up. Mike Hanson will, unless the town agrees to do it, which I wouldn't, but-
All right, I'm sure of that.
Okay, so we're in agreement that I'll get back to him and say that mid-April's fine, except for the fact that, given the condition of the road in the north not being finished, it's gonna have to come in from the south and he's gonna have to work with Hanover.
And the only thing I'm thinking of right now was we were trying to get an easement, but I don't know that we need to have that easement down, because that was for the temporary bridge.
Yes.
Right.
No, I think we're good, Dina.
Yep.
You're rendering correctly, but since we're not going around and-
Right, okay.
So no, we're okay. Okay?
Yeah, that's good.
Am I missing anything?
No.
Let me just make a note to myself, so I'll take that action item? Or do you want to, you want to, do you want to, do you want to go, do you want to pick this up from here?
I don't get it.
I'd be more than-
You want me to talk to Mike and make sure he talks to the other Mike?
You know what, I'd be, let me, if you don't mind, Steve, I'd just soon, I'd just soon pass this off at this point.
Yeah, I'll talk to, I'll talk to both of them and I'll coordinate with them.
That's even a better-
I'll even talk to Hanover first and make sure it's an option. Okay.
So you can, you can let us know, just email us what you learn.
Okay.
Just send it to Dina, she can send it out to us. Great, one thing off my to-do list.
Yay!
Anything else, Steve?
Yeah, I got a couple little things. We don't have to deal with them today, I just wanna remind you that, that you still haven't, the truck schedule's still not locked in, right? We're still, that's a work in progress.
Yep.
All right, because I wanna make sure that third truck doesn't come out. And I also wanna urge you guys to, for what, you really should keep that 2011. Just for what, I mean, I have $40,000 in parts in that truck, and to get 17 grand for it, it's not costing us anything other than insurance money to sit there. We use it frequently. The other day, all three of my trucks broke down at once. I mean, it's, it's, it just makes sense to keep it, and just get rid of the Sterling. And I may have a contract driver for it this winter too, I've been talking with. So I just think it makes sense to keep it, there's so many, to let that truck go for that price.
Okay, well, hold that thought, because we got, we've got time.
Right.
Right, because that's, because the folks that you're buying the new truck from are the same folks that you're watching.
Right, they don't want it until I get my truck from, so-
We've got, we've got time to talk about it.
They got about a year.
I mean, the logic is, is solid, right? If you need that many trucks, and that you're just not getting the value out of it, because you've got a lot in-
You'll make a liar out of me.
Why is that?
Town meeting they were at, and I asked if we were gonna sell some trucks.
Oh.
Well, we talked about getting rid of two.
Right.
I mean-
So are we still getting rid of two?
Sounds like he's recommending one.
A different-
I've been recommending one, though, I've been trying to keep this, you know, just for what, what we've got. I mean, we tried the private sale route, didn't generate anything, really, you know?
So, we'll, we'll keep working it.
Yep.
So Ben, I don't, we don't have a decision, I don't, I'm not sure. I think we really gotta have a, just quiet time and just to focus just on that.
Yeah.
Look at the stuff that's back up on the board and walk through and really lay it out as far as manpower, whether you can get contract drivers, whether you can hire other people.
What I wanna get for hours on the stuff I have, it's gonna, because we'll ask people to get more hours.
There's, there's-
Lot of variables.
Right. Okay, fair enough.
So, just don't, okay, and I think that's the last thing I had, just, I didn't know if you wanted me around, I'll give you my two cents on the coronavirus.
I do, I do, no, please do. Because that's, so the next thing we're gonna do, and Shawna's on deck after that, and then anyone else, Dina and everyone's at Fettis input, is I wanna talk about the critical services that we've got that we need. So up there, I've got department head input, E&amp;D, and health officer input. Tell me what you got, and then dependent on how much you've got, I might stop you and get Margaret on the line, because I can hear you right now, you're listening in.
Okay, the little stuff I have is that, I've talked to some other highway departments, and what they're doing is they're putting signs up or posting that they're, it's employees only on the facility.
I know.
Employees only on the town facilities, no salesman, and that's the biggest thing, is traveling salesman I get daily. It's salesman, taxpayers, anything, no. You know, just, just highway employees on, I'm still functioning right now. It is starting to get harder to get parts and lubricants and stuff like that, because these companies are kind of shutting down. So I'm still operational, I'm still getting fuel, I'm still getting, and I can still do the road stuff, I'm still getting gravel, stuff like that. So we could still operate kind of how we are. One of the huge things that bothers me is the transfer station, because that's, I mean, that's just a, that brings so many people to that facility. And now, even some of the research I did this morning, they're talking like the virus can live on metal, plastic for three days, doesn't matter the temperature. And they're saying you can live on cardboard for 24 hours. I mean, it just, then you get the dump personnel going in and out of my office, in and out of everything, it's just, and I can't, I can't get cleaning supplies. I don't have toilet paper down there, and I can't even get cleaning supplies right now to wipe off door handles, I have nothing down there to clean with. I can't find any. I tried to order stuff from Mason last week, I did an order, I got a receipt, I got an invoice, but I don't have the material. So that, that's, that's one of the things, the biggest concern I have is, is having the transfer station down there functioning.
Too bad Dina stepped out.
I mean, and there's only, there's only three of us, so if anybody goes down-
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about that some more, Steve.
Transfer station is an issue.
And I'm a little worried about employees, just because, you know, I know some of their families work at the hospital, and it's not, yeah, there's only three of us down here, but their families all travel and workplaces and-
Do you have, do you have anything pressing?
I don't, I'm gonna sand when the snow's done, but-
Why don't you hang tight for a little bit? I think having you here is beneficial. Excuse me while I get Margaret on the line.
Hello?
Good morning, Margaret, Kevin, and the board and company.
Good morning, everyone.
How are you?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can you hear us okay?
I can hear you fine.
So, we just, we just started talking, we're just starting to talk with the department heads with respect to their operation, the challenges that they're having. And Steve Williams is here, and he started off, and maybe just recap if you-
I'll just recap, Margaret, some of the couple things, concerns that I have. One of the concerns is, my major concern, I could function right now, I'm still able to get materials to work on the roads. I am starting to have issues getting some lubricants and some stuff to keep the machines going, but so far, I'm okay. We can still operate down there, but what I'm a little worried about is I have employees, there's only three of us, but some of their family members work at the hospital and different places, where they have a lot of contact with people. And as you know, I, I can't get clean supplies to even clean my facility, I can't, I don't even have toilet paper or clean faci, cleaning materials down there right now. Oh, I can't get any, I've been everywhere on my own personal time looking, but still can't find any. And then the biggest worry I have is the transfer station. I've done a little bit of research, maybe I'm wrong, but this morning I found some stuff where it doesn't matter the temperature, it can live on certain surfaces like plastic, plastic for three days, cardboard for 24 hours, and then the dump personnel going in and out, or taxpayers that need to use the facilities while they're there. I, that's my biggest concern, is to dump the transfer station where we're working right now.
Um, yeah, I know, I just read Matt's suggestion for how to collect prey, et cetera. Anyway, I just, the problem is, we're winging this, everyone, and the research sometimes for the surface contact ability for the, of the virus to live are done in research situations. We don't really know how that plays out in the real world. Most of the infections are felt to be aerosolized, so if you have the virus cough, sneeze, if you're in within that three, six to eight feet boundary, there's a potential of getting it that way, that's the most common way of getting it. On surfaces, maybe, you know, compacting the trash might expose people if they're, you know, close to it when it's, when that's, the material is crushed, if it's got a lot of viruses in it, but it's a matter of quantity. So it's, it's really difficult. And when you say you're having trouble getting cleaning supplies, you mean like a disinfectant for your steering wheel, or like Clorox wipes, or something like that? Are you talking about trying to clean the trucks?
Yeah, Margaret, let me just, I'll let Steve answer in a second, just so, I should have let you know ahead of time. So one, the meeting's being recorded, and we've got one member of the public here, and also Chief O'Keefe, so I should have let you know that ahead of time. So I mean, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, you're right, I don't have any cleaning things, but you're right, wipes, sprays, nothing, I have nothing at the highway department. And the second, my second concern with a transfer station also is, they're always within six feet contact, because they have to get their cards punched. People hand them their tickets, they punch those tickets, they're taking stuff out of their vehicles, all those people are within, well within six feet contact at all times. And you don't really realize the spectrum of it until you're down there watching dump, like I was yesterday, when we got, it's just, I mean, massive people, close contact. I mean, that's probably the biggest danger in this entire town right now, as far as transferring.
Matt and Dina, I think, have been working it all day long yesterday, and we talked a little bit this morning, so we're-
It's so stressful.
We're certainly, we're certainly aware that we've got to do something to mitigate, right? So, Margaret, tell me, my understanding is something like, as simple, if you will, is a capful of bleach in, in a bucket of water is a pretty useful disinfectant. I mean, I'm just trying to help Steve, if he can't find, you know, the-
The wipes.
The wipes, or this, or that, you know, there's other ways, I think.
I obviously won't bleach my expensive equipment, but I will the doorknobs.
No, 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 well, I'm just, I'm not suggesting that, you know? I'm not saying full-strength bleach.
I know, even diluted, I won't do it.
But I think very, 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 very weak solutions does the trick.
Well, here's what, this morning, you, they have had hand sanitizer and wipes in the past, they're out.
Right.
Matt has been going up there and disinfecting, and Matt actually is mixing them up. One of the bleach and water solutions that he's done here for us, for them to go around and do the surfaces.
Right.
As they feel they need to.
But one of the things, it sounds like, one of the things we need to add to Matt's opening and closing of the transfer station is when they're done, you know, because they're coming in there with their gloves, if they've gotta go and use the restroom, they're taking their gloves off, and then they're coming back out. And so there's a, there's a point there where they're gonna have to be disinfecting as they come, certainly by the time they're done, so that-
I think if you ask Matt, he has been doing that, just so you know.
Okay, well-
Well, you know, I need to do it on, I don't have the materials to do it on a daily basis.
So you will have it, though.
Sounds like.
Okay.
But good feedback, I mean, I think that the operation of the transfer station, as we saw from the decisions made yesterday, and I think you wanted to talk about a little bit more, is a concern, right? I mean, it's, it's your facility that we share with the transfer station, so I get it. Do we want to talk, lead them to the transfer station and see, Dina, do you want, is Matt still around, do you wanna?
Matt left it that he was going to talk with Margaret.
Yep.
And then come up with the suggestion that Margaret felt comfortable with.
And I just sent him my, my boss 15 minutes ago.
Okay, good.
So we'll need an update later.
He's still here, a little bit.
He may not have had time to read it, or?
He probably hasn't.
For you guys to talk about.
I agree with you.
I need to talk to him.
You what?
She could read it to us if you want.
Oh, do it up.
Go ahead, Margaret.
So, I don't, I don't, he wrote to me about his plan to have one car at a time pull up and unload their vehicle, recycling themselves. They would pull up to the trash trunk and unload while employees stayed back at a safe distance, monitoring and controlling traffic. I feel that this would be the safest approach for the public, and employees from overexposure to the COVID virus. And so I wrote back, my immediate thoughts, and if I can, I'll see what others are offering, like the plans of sanitation people in other cities, but it's the same idea. I looked, I liked your plan, my only concern, the elders who may have trouble lifting bags into trucks. Are your gloves washable or disposable nitro or non-nitro gloves? Do you know how to take off safely, if disposable gloves? If gloves are work gloves, I'm concerned that they will become their own dirty vehicle with reuse after reuse for all sorts of things, unless they can be cleaned. Agreed that handling waste like dirty Kleenex is unsafe, but that the majority of COVID spread is probably from virus caught up in aerosol from cough or sneezing. Yes, these particles when dropped on surfaces can stay there for a while, but that's going to be a much lower risk than standing in someone's sneeze or cough.
Okay, great.
So-
And I, and, well, just so you know, Matt is and has unloaded any senior citizen who cannot get out of their vehicle and do it?
Still willing to do it.
Matt has been doing that, that's right.
I don't, I didn't see him say that he, they're, were advising people who are sick not to come to the transfer station, because that would be another way of decreasing that.
Well, that's a good reminder.
So I wonder, this is Judy Brotman, Margaret.
Uh huh.
If there would be less contact if the bags and recyclables were in the back of the vehicle and the person who might be sick didn't get out of the car. It just, it seems almost reversed to me, that this way, with someone getting in and out, we're almost exposing more than we were with the traditional way. And my, my other concern is, I did hear from Matt last night, because I offered to help when I heard that they may be gonna be a little bit short-staffed, that the Kleenexes, which I know may not be carrying live virus, but to put it in with the recycling is kind of a nasty thing, and maybe just a reminder to people that there's a certain way to handle it. That, you know, it never hurts to have a reminder, sometimes we get lazy.
Right, right, and that makes perfect sense, I had sort of made that connection as they're doing it to the recyclables, but yes, they should probably avoid that.
But I think, I think the Matt's crew has generally been aware that they see recyclables that have been contaminated.
Yeah.
Like, they put it right into the trash trunk anyway, so, you know, there's a workaround for that. But I, Judy, I kind of share your same concern, I think that's part of the conversation that Dina and Matt had after, you know, I think yesterday was, you know, an attempt, a map.
Margaret's on the phone.
Margaret's on his phone.
Margaret.
She saw your, she saw, she saw your, your email, she read us, did you get time to read her email?
No, not yet.
Okay, so she just read it back to us. I think generally, she's supportive of doing the one person, you know, themselves unloading, is what I heard, with a couple other suggestions.
Okay.
Yeah, I think Judy's idea of having people pick it up from the trunk is another option, yeah.
Having what people pick it up from the trunk?
Well, so just, if, if we have to.
Yeah.
If, if Matt has to help someone, having it where it's in the trunk of the back of the, you know, back of the pickup or SUV or car. Because a lot of people come chock-a-block full, it's front seat, back seat, trunk, the whole works.
Yeah.
Well, Matt didn't hear, obviously, because he doesn't know the email, but Margaret is suggesting you send out, you know, reminding people if they're sick to stay home.
Okay, yeah.
Or if somebody is sick, put their stuff or coughing or whatever, or could be exposed, put their trash in the, in their trunk, so you don't have to open the car up.
Yeah. Sounds like a plan.
Sounds like a plan. The other thing I was going to try and suggest to people is to use the stickers. Put them on your bag, try and get it on there and not use the.
You might want to just make it, just make it so Matt say, you know, basically.
Stop selling them to the hardware store and the.
Right. And if somebody comes with a punch, just say, we'll get you in a month when we're all back to normal.
Or rip it off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tell them, tell them everything.
Exactly. You know, so all those things, you know, just think about sort of, you and Dina can sit and sort of make a list of all the things that you want to put in place.
Okay.
And I, I think you've certainly increased your chance of success, if you will, for not having anyone get sick. And frankly, then, you know, you basically don't need the help. So that limits their exposure, right?
Yeah.
Because they're not there.
Yeah, exactly.
And it slows down the traffic that Steve's got concerns with, with people back and forth into the building. So one of the things that, if you haven't already, when you finish, every time you go in and out, when you finish, basically make sure that everything's wiped down, cleaned up.
Yeah.
Steve's concerned about, basically, if you go back in and out while you've been handling everything.
Oh, yeah.
I have no supplies, Matt. I can't even find it to clean the place. Like I don't have any disinfectant any.
I'll get you something.
I can't, I went yesterday looking on my own and I couldn't find it anywhere.
Yeah, no, it's, they're out everywhere. So we'll, we'll make sure we get something over there for you too and we'll make it happen. Yeah. Yeah, because that is a concern, you know, cross contamination with gloves.
Are you looking for inside the cab of stuff for like, like the wipes? Is that you're mostly looking for?
Yes, like I said, bleach, no matter what dilution, is not recommended for any type of plastic. That's why I wouldn't wipe my equipment out or anything that has bleach in it. Bleach, ammonia, anything like that. Alcohol, all those things actually, I know you have to use alcohol, but those things, they dry out plastic and they'll fade it and, you know, not going to run out on a $330,000 grader.
So what are you looking, what are you looking for?
I don't know. I've got to figure out something. But I mean, probably something alcohol based would be the least, the least harmful, I guess, on equipment.
Soap and water beats nothing.
Yeah.
I'll look. I might have an extra tub of wipes at my house.
So what do you want to do as far as the highway department?
Just bleach and water for the coworkers.
As I've been doing.
Well, I think, I think I would contact all your vendors and say, you know, until I call you, please stay away. And if you want to post the building somehow.
Just as something, I'll keep the door locked and I'll put a note on the, on the glass that, you know, call me if you need to speak with me or employees only.
And I think we'll probably put together a whole list of things. After we finish with today and as things go on, we'll probably start putting together a whole list of things that we're going to advise. You know, not like in the detail that Matt will for his operation or what you might, but just some general things. Because we're going to talk at some point about how we manage even this office with, with people coming and going. Okay. Good. Good feedback. You don't have to.
Awesome. Well, thank you.
Well, you can stick around if you want, Matt, because it's up, whether you've got time, you're welcome. Because a lot of it comes down to cleaning sanitation. We got Margaret on the line, so.
A lot of towns are shut down. The Haverhill, Hanover, I mean, a lot of.
So when you say that, what's, what's Hanover done?
Um, I had to go to Yeezy still in Woodsville the other day and I saw the big blinking sign that Haverhill is closed. Town offices are closed. And I tweeted on your own news yesterday, I believe, said Hanover was closed.
Essential employees only.
Right, so.
No public, no public.
Yeah. So we're, we're working in that direction. By, by the end of today, we'll probably have something, if not exactly the same, something similar. Okay.
That's all I got.
You're welcome to stay if you've got time.
Stay safe.
Chief O'Keefe, so same, you maybe heard the very beginning.
You still want Margaret on the line?
Yeah, I do, actually. So, Sean, if you could, we've, Sean and I have had some conversations around business continuity, his ability to, with two people, to be able to stay in business if one person gets sick. So without, sort of like with what we did with Steve, without going into non-public in any specific personal type dialogue.
Yep.
Could you talk more, just overarching, you know, sort of what you're learning from other organizations and where you see yourself or what you propose as far as, and if, if this gets to a point where you feel as though that's information that you don't necessarily want or need to share with the public, then we can go into non-public if you see the need.
Okay.
But if you could, sort of at a high level, maybe point us where you're, where you're headed.
Okay. So obviously, over the last week and a half and more so over the last five or six days, most of the, well, probably most of the police departments in the state, but.
Margaret, are you hearing Sean okay?
Yes, I am.
Okay, okay, okay. Just making sure. Thanks.
And especially the police departments within the Upper Valley, they've pretty much limited all of their buildings to employees only, locking the doors. If you're not an actual employee of that department, you're not allowed in unless it's an absolute emergency. So even given the fact that we have used Hanover Police's booking room and, you know, we do our prosecutor's house there and all of that, we can't go in. They actually have the dispatch center is now, basically quarantining all the dispatchers. When they come in the building, they put them in dispatch and lock all the doors. Nobody's allowed inside dispatch. They have to, when they leave, they have to clean. I know some of them are actually bringing spare clothes to change in and out of when they arrive and when they leave. The, so I mean, I have, I posted a sign on our door that basically says the, that same stuff. You know, if, you know, if a vehicle, if a cruiser's here knocking on the door, we will answer you and determine how we're going to deal with your situation, whether you come inside, how we do it. You know, after, we ask the questions, the same questions that the ambulance crews in the fast squad is asking now. Have you been traveling? You know, do you have any cough, cold, fever, any of the signs or symptoms? And is this an emergency? Is it not an emergency? Otherwise, if we're not there, they're directed to pick up the phone and talk to dispatch in the exact same manner. And dispatch is going to ask them those exact same questions. So we're really trying to keep people out of there. You know, one of the, one of the things I think that's crucial for not only all law enforcement, but, you know, the highway guys, any of our town employees within fire and fast squad is that, you know, we, we got to really, we got to be careful about what we do and how we do it. Because if one of us gets sick or if, you know, every, every emergency personnel's person that we don't have is detrimental. So we're being cautious. I went to a couple of fast squad calls on Saturday. People were very cautious. Those questions were asked, a lot of distancing, which is not easy to do in an emergency situation. And, you know, unfortunately, the, the risk of one of us or multiples of us getting in contact with someone who has it or might have it, pretty high. You know, we don't know what kind of, you know, if we have to, if we go to a situation, a car crash or something like that, where, I mean, we're all going to be in there. And, and I think that if something like that happens, we all have to take huge precautions before we get back in our cars. And, you know, I mean, we all have hand sanitizers, we all have gloves, masks. We don't have gowns, but I'm actually working with Michael Hensley right now on getting gowns for the cruisers. And whatever other PPEs that he can get for us. I don't know, Margaret, do you have any other suggestions or input?
You still there, Margaret?
Sorry, I had to take a call from my last week.
Did you catch?
Sean, I need to talk with you after this phone call, okay? You're in a private, sort of like, board situation.
Okay. Well, which, which one, which one does it, what does it need, Margaret? If you want to get two birds with one stone, we can go into non-public if it's urgent.
It's not that urgent, but I need to talk to Sean. Sean, why don't you call me on my cell phone?
Okay.
Do you have that number?
Uh, why don't you just give it to me so I don't have to look for it?
Six oh three nine three zero five six seven one.
Okay. I'll call in a little bit.
Okay. I'm sorry, George.
One suggestion I heard on the radio was that some people are actually using the large trash, uh, plastic bags where it is a poncho and it protects you from splatter and whatever. So in an emergency.
Okay, Margaret, we'll let you go and we'll excuse Sean so you guys can talk. And then if need be, if, if you decide or Sean decides, when you come back in, if it's something that we need to address right now, then Sean can just let us know.
Okay, great.
Okay. And when you free up, as we get back to more of this, we'll give you a call if we need to, okay? Thank you.
I can just go unmute.
No, you can't on this phone. He can't pick this line up out there.
Then, uh, we just all one line.
On this phone, yes, but the other ones, no, it's, yeah, monkey, sorry. He'll have to.
So we'll have to call you back. Thank you, Margaret. All right, thank you, Matt.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Steve.
Yep, I'm all set.
Well, yeah, we'll keep working it.
Okay. Okay, I'll keep going as normal until just nobody's allowed in.
Yeah.
Well, I think, you know, conversation.
I think you should post that.
Yeah, we're, we're, we'll get to it, I think. So it's up to you.
Maybe even, I mean, I also might be, even though, because I have a lot of interactions on the road. Even though, even if you see me, don't even stop and talk to me unless it's an emergency. Just I get a lot of road interaction too, so.
Last time I tried to stop you, you yelled at me. He was coming up the hill with a load and this is, this is 2017. And he's like, I'm not stopping with a load coming up the hill, Kevin. Wait for me.
The bright side is that the liquor store is still full. I went there yesterday, still plenty of stuff. All right, we'll see you then.
All right, thanks.
So if we could just reference, if you will, the slide that I made. So Ben, this one, did you keep, did you keep the one copy? You remember it. You know, so it starts to talk about a decision tree, basically, is what it's trying to do. And I'll just, just, so it can kind of work off of a piece of paper.
Oh, my favorite thing.
I wish it was bigger. Oh, oh.
Here, I'll trade you.
Where are you going to buy that TV? Put it on the wall.
I know.
All right, here you go.
There, we keep making more? I've got an electronic one.
Oh, all right.
So what it's trying to do is, is as you go to the, like, to the left to right, is first ask, asking, you know, asking yourself, what's critical? What's, what's critical that we maintain? What part of the operation of the town, but now I'm talking EMS, I'm talking about the town clerk I'm talking about, Dina's position, David's position, Matt's position. You know, what's critical and what's important? I mean, they're all basically, all, we wouldn't have them if they weren't important, but all the functions that they, that they do. But there's things, there's certain things that we could probably get by with. And that's why I asked for Dina to put out an email to all the supervisors, department heads, to give us some feedback on that department head input, what's, what's critical. And then also get Margaret from an E and D and then Michael Hensley from a health officer input. And when you boil it right down, what I've heard, starting maybe with town clerk, is that they basically could run their operation electronically for car registrations and have the office closed. And when this communication comes out from us, we let folks know that this is how we're going to operate. If they need to buy appointment to come in and do something, that they can pick up the phone, get in touch with Patty, email her, make an appointment, and they can basically work out what has to be done if there's something like that that has to occur. So from talking with Ms. Jenks, she felt like that was doable. And, and talking a little bit with Sean, he's like, Sean, what's, if someone doesn't get their car registered for a month, you know, it'll, it'll get by. Now, the, the problem is, is that they go and travel. They may not, you know, in town, they might get by, but if they travel. So it's not like we want to take that away. Doing registrations online is really quite straightforward. So for the people that have that capability, it's doable. For those that don't, Patty's willing to keep by appointment and, and do the registrations.
And I believe in the state of New Hampshire, the governor has declared that they're going to extend out to the end of April, all registrations. So, yeah, if you go somewhere else, it might not happen. But I think people are going to be checking with the other states, so.
Yeah, and I wouldn't be surprised if other states are almost going to say.
They're going to do, pretty much everybody's doing the same thing if you follow the news.
So from that department's perspective, I, I think that we're, if we were to, and this is where the decision tree comes down. It's like, okay, town office operation on the left, is it open? Or is it, is it open all the way or is it fully closed? And you have to decide. And if it's open, then you stay status quo. I think we're talking around the fact that staying in that left part of the decision tree, staying status quo, probably not a good idea, right? When I say status quo.
I'd think everything should be by appointment only and not try to go partially open or partial.
Okay, so, so then, the other side, and that's another way, look, the other side of it was full close and then, you know, how long or longer. But I think what I'm hearing from Ben is that you're, you're open but limited. So it's sort of, it's sort of that bigger, it's, it's open, open by appointment.
I think it's closed.
Yes.
And only open by appointment.
Very good.
The message we want to get across is it's closed.
Everybody would be on the same page.
Yep. And, and it's at least, I would say for three weeks.
I don't even know if we can do a term. I think, I think, I think until, until.
Well, if someone's going to ask, I think we're looking at that second week of April.
We're just going to have to repeat it.
At the earliest. I know we're going to have to repeat it, but.
I think, I think it'd almost be better just to say until, until the virus threat subsides, when they will let people know, I think is a better.
It's not going to just go away by date turn.
No, no, I know that, but people are going to say, well, is it just closed for this week or next week or, you know?
We'll just say when the governor tells us it's okay, I'll think.
When he starts telling everything, everybody can open back up.
Yeah.
That'll be our, that'll be, that'll be our clue.
Your cue, right.
I, I think, Judy, I think that's better. I don't, because in two weeks or a month, we'll just have to reiterate it again. It lets, I think it really starts to get people thinking longer term. You know, almost every person that you've listened to on the news, they've talked about this as being the marathon and we're just at the very, very beginning of it. And so I don't think we have a really good feel of how long that race is going to be.
I don't either. I just think it's, is, there will be a number of people who think, okay, the town office is closed. And they're going to think, okay, then they're going to open up in a week or they're going to open.
Right.
So it needs, the message needs to be something as definitive as long term or
Right.
until the governor says, not just, we're closed, we don't know when we're going to open. Because that leaves it way.
I just, for the governor's word, when he says things are okay.
Could you support that? I mean, I get, I get your point. But I think that's probably going to be closer to when we know that it's time to open back up to normal.
Yeah. I, I would still like a, even if it's a, for the foreseeable future, until the governor says. So that there's something more than just, we're hanging out here and we're closed and good luck.
Let's get this wording, I actually want to, if, if we're all in agreement.
Well, by appointment, so you still services are here, but they're limited. And the office is just closed until, close the public until.
There's no alternative by appointment only. Cause otherwise everyone's gonna call for an appointment.
Say that one more time?
If there's no alternative, you can call and get an appointment. But it's not just, for my convenience, I want an appointment. I have an alternative, I can use the electronic online service or I can wait a month and see what happens. So, I mean, we're not just trying to continue a steady stream of public in the building.
So, so try to, so let's try to, so Barbara, do you see where we're, where we're talking about, where we're headed since you stepped in?
Is this the town office?
Yeah. What are your thoughts if we were basically to close the town office to the public? And then give them options for registrations, options for talking with planning and zoning or talking with Dina or talking, let's say, with yourself by appointment, only by appointment.
And, you know, that, and that could be curbside. Doesn't have to be in the building.
Could be outside.
Or a one-on-one.
Depending, depending what it is.
Could be phone. There are a lot of conversations that could happen by phone.
And if somebody needs material, like an emergency needs material, the copies can be left out in the vestibule in an envelope with their name on it.
And we should, into our, into our notice, we should have some, something about critical or emergency basis and then if it's not, and if it can wait a month or two, let it wait. So just let me get Barbara's thoughts on that. How does that strike you if we're to do that? What do, what do you see?
Everything by appointment?
Yes.
Let me get Patty.
I've already had the conversation with her.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Okay.
She, she was okay with that.
And by appointment through a phone call message left at the office?
I don't know yet.
Okay.
Yeah, the building would be closed to the public.
Okay.
And I think the message that you sent was that people could drop their tax payments off in the mailbox out there.
Or mail.
And that you wanted the board to, um, vote to
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't.
The interest and stuff.
I didn't realize, I didn't, I didn't realize that you had, that you had.
This is Patty's that she's sent.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that she told me she talked to you about.
And then I sent one that was, um.
Yeah, you did, and that's what, you didn't wanna be, right. You don't want people coming in, you supported that, right?
Yeah.
So drop it in the mail.
Mail or in the foyer.
Farn?
In the outside box.
There's a mailbox outside of the building that people can put their, they can put any kind of payment or any kind of message for the town clerk or the tax collector. They each have their own.
I said I'd check the computer, I mean, I would.
So you already communicated, you already pushed.
No, no, to Dina.
Oh.
But.
So do you have access to your computer records at your house?
No.
Okay.
I don't want to. But I guess I could, I mean, I don't really ever wanna do that.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's necessary.
Yeah.
Because
I mean, we've already.
We can still come into the building.
Right, we've, and we've told everyone, if you're sick, stay home.
Right.
You guys have plenty of distance in between you. Odds are, especially if you go to by appointment, um, your, your time in there is gonna be even more limited, if you will, cause you'll have less clients to, to serve.
Well, then God forbid, let's say Barbara got a cold and couldn't come in. Well, Patty's the deputy, so she can collect the money and do the stuff and.
Right.
And even, you know, I could come in when no one else is here. I mean, I could come in in the middle of the night, you know, someone would be out there. I feel like I could check my email on a regular basis and answer people in a timely manner as far as I'm healthy, I mean, as long as I'm.
And as far as any property, I know that's, you, you would put that in one of your thing.
Yeah.
You know, any property information or ownership information, I mean, that's really not critical. It's online or, you know, that's our office anyways, you shouldn't be having to fuss with that.
So Patty, you guys share the space. The idea of actually having separate, where basically Barbara comes in off your hours at different time, four to six or something in the afternoon, any downside?
That's fine, I, were we talking exclusively about the tax collector stuff or?
For now, just her stuff, yeah.
Yes, I'm happy to do, to do that, then I'll tell you what my thoughts are about my own things.
Okay. So, okay. So Barbara, that, I, I think that captures a lot of what you probably had in the email. I don't think I got, I don't think I read that, but.
Yeah, no, no weekly official office hours.
Right.
Everything can be handled remotely.
Right. Good. Okay, Ed?
Um, so I have like a lot of directives from the state. And they're, they're, they're shutting down stuff, but they don't have a lot of, you know, they're sort of letting the town clerks and the towns establish their own product, protocol for this. We just have to advise them what we're doing. I access everything from home, so I, I answer emails all the time from there. So that helps a lot to cut down on the stuff I have to do in here.
Sure.
My thought was that I would do Wednesday, like Wednesday mornings, come in, which allows me to do all the mail-ins and keep, and the, um, online stuff and allow people to establish appointment times if they have things that can't be done online, which there are a few of that happen. And so that limits, it would be probably just me. Katie can't be in here by herself yet cause she hasn't done all the training. I haven't heard from Sharon, I don't know what her situation is, so. Between the three of us, we can, we can coordinate time. But I was thinking that Wednesday would be the logical time to do that. And then by appointment as necessary if people couldn't do Mondays.
So just to catch you up with where we were at, we're thinking that we would basically announce that the office is closed. And that if, I'm taking a little bit of a modification of what you said, in that for your department, for the town clerk's activities, if they can't take care of it online, like the car registrations,
Yeah.
and they need to make an appointment, they can by appointment see you Wednesday afternoon is what I'm hearing.
Perfect, yeah. So.
So we're basically.
So we're gonna advertise that I'm gonna be open on Wednesday, I'm just gonna do it by appointment at discretion.
Yeah, and so what, what I, what I wanna do really is, is make it.
No, open hours.
Yeah.
The building will be closed to the public.
Okay, okay.
Right.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
That's, yeah.
That's okay.
Yeah. So that's, so that's the, that's the little twist on, but do you think that would work for you?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Nobody ever died from not registering a car.
Right.
They might think they're going to, but they won't.
Okay. Okay, so Dina, for you, what do you think? What, what are your thoughts?
Same thing.
Same thing?
Closed to the public. If, um, if there's an emergency, you know, for information or for whatever, then again, you know, they can call, we won't advertise that, but they can call.
Call or email.
Call or email, that's right. Yeah. I think that's the way to go.
Well, since we've got the collective.
And David already.
Dave is.
Well, he gave a list of things, but I think what needs to be addressed before that are committee and commission and board meetings.
Well, you're right. Cause basically where we're headed is that once we decide that the office is closed, now this gets to the critical aspect of what committees, commissions and boards are critical. They're all important. Which ones are critical over the next couple of months?
None.
None.
If anything, the board's segment, if something came up that you had to address.
But we also could meet.
Yeah, we'll work, we'll work on that in a minute.
The others, I think, you know, there's no land, there are very few land deals that would be that critical that the planning board or the zoning board couldn't put off. And that's a big number of people. The rec commissions, a big number of people with a lot of contact from the children and, you know, it's just, it spreads out, as soon as you start looking at each group and you see where it is, I think they should all just hunker down and, and things are better and we can open back up, we'll go back and play some catch-up.
Right. So I know planning and zoning is meeting tonight, next week, Thursday, the planning board. They didn't have anything urgent, so they've already decided to postpone, but they do have, they're in, they're in, yeah, can't, well, they canceled it, but they actually anticipate, I think, two Thursdays, or next Thursday, in three weeks, where they have a need to meet. So.
Because they have something pending.
Right.
And that might be able to be delayed again if necessary.
Might be. I, I don't necessarily, I don't, for this board, I'm not sure if I wanna make that decision for the planning board or for the planning and zoning, I think without at least talking to it.
No, they, they probably, they're duly elected, but their chair should be making.
That's, that's what I was thinking too bad. Unless we take the office away from.
Well, maybe they have to meet somewhere else, exactly.
Right.
I mean, if you've decided this building is closed to the public,
Right.
then it's closed and they can.
I think that's one of those tough decisions that kinda, if we're going down this road, we need to make. And it's, you can't just say that, well, that ten, that group of five people or ten people, they're exempt from everything. I, I think they can be exposed just the way anyone else can and then you're bringing the public in and you're bringing the board in and then, so the people that work here.
Yeah, they gotta go to meetings too.
Yeah, I, I think that's a bad idea personally.
And when you think about them getting together as a meeting, you know, they'd have to obviously spread way out in some other location.
It's not any better.
But the plan, it, it isn't any better, you're right. But the, but David could get all their stuff ready, cause, you know, he'd be here and bring it with him. So if it had to happen, it could, but it really probably.
But then we're putting an employee at risk when he goes to the meeting.
Well, exactly, that's why I think, yeah. I support you Judy, it's all or nothing.
Okay. Hang on one second, so I, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna, and I, very, very important conversation, I wanna try as hard as we can to stick to allowing the ten o'clock timeframe. I don't necessarily wanna break in, but, but, but I, but I'll give Sue, since you were, looked like you were.
Yeah, uh, just one thing, sunshine is a great disinfectant. So meetings could be held outside on a nice day.
Right.
And, you know, sunshine will disinfect the virus.
Did you have anything else, um, public comment wise, but thank you, I just, yeah.
That, my plastic bags.
Yeah, yeah.
I always thought we should only meet on rainy days, I can do something on a sunny day.
Okay. Well, I don't, I don't know if I'm comfortable making a decision for the other major boards, really, it's planning.
My guess is they're gonna go along with, we don't have to make the decision for them, but you can, you can frame it as though this is what we're doing and we're shutting down.
But, yeah, they decided, they decided to meet in two weeks at night, could we work through that?
Well, I would say the answer is we'll wait and see what's happening in two weeks.
Right, but, but.
We didn't wanna have a definitive time when we were gonna open the building back up, so we're not giving them a definitive time.
You know, I mean, things likely are not, are gonna look not any better in two weeks than they, than they do today, probably look worse.
And if the planning board can't eat, can't eat, can't meet, it's not the end of the world.
Right. Well, it only is for the people, the applicant.
I understand that, but, well, it's not the end of the world for them.
Right.
It would be a disappointment and it would be probably a holdup of the project.
These could be delays, these could be delays, we, we could be talking months.
I understand.
Okay, well, I hate to use this phrase, but I guess we'll jump off that bridge when we get to it. And that we can go ahead and take the steps to let all the boards and committees know that the building has been, um, we're gonna close effective a certain day that we decide in the next few minutes and we can work on that wording. Do we wanna take the time to work on that specific wording now as a group? This is, this is our time.
I think we should decide the essence of it, move through the rest of our agenda and then come back and work on wording before we.
Okay, 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 that's fine. I can do, I can do.
What about virtual meetings?
For us?
Not for us, but for, if the planning board feels they have to meet.
Yeah.
Do it on Zoom.
Yeah, well, let's, I, I was postponing Judy's thought a minute ago, but I'll, I'll take the opportunity. As I understand, if we can do this, we can still have our meeting, it still has to be noticed, it still has to be open to the public. Only for us three, only one of us has to be here. The other two people need to be on the phone and be able to hear each other so that there can be a conversation. And I don't have any problem with that. I mean, I, quite, for the three of us, I don't see any reason why we couldn't, but we're gonna have to go through things like the, um, manifest comes up. You're gonna have to look at the manifest electronically, ask if you have any questions and then we're gonna have to basically, whoever's here, whoever's sitting basically in this room.
Your offer is decided.
Exactly. But I think, I, I think it's, do you not mean, is there any, what, what's gonna keep us from doing that? I mean, I think it's management.
Absolutely nothing, that sounds like the best plan.
Yeah, I mean, planning board and, you know, P and Z, they got more papers, they study, you know, they're, they've got a little bit more, it's hard for them to get the big plaits out electronically and see what's going on, but they'll have to figure out for themselves what works, but that model, if you will, might work for them too.
Well, I was gonna say, you don't know what John Stadler has, you know, cooked up in his brain. Maybe he's got some plan for in three weeks for whatever this meeting may be, so you can, you don't have to try to figure that out today.
Right, right. But I'm okay with that, for us. It sort of sets the.
And so the key to that is making sure that everything that we need to know goes out to the three of us. Dina sends it out electronically to the three of us, which facilitates probably a faster meeting anyway, but, um.
My only challenge I gotta learn is has how to do a conference call on this thing. I know it can be done though. I think you just dial the number, hit flash, dial the.
Conference call?
Yeah, cause basically we wanna be able to.
Well, we'll look up the instructions for it, but I don't, I, I think we can. Good, that'd be great.
Yeah, because if we close the building, we close the building, I think that that's the essence of it and limit contact for town staff with.
Yeah.
And for the.
But I think we're gonna, I think we, the, this board's gonna have more things to address
Yep.
as time progresses.
Oh, I think so too.
That I don't think, I don't think we can afford to take, I, I thought about it, I thought maybe going every other week?
No, I think we've got full agendas, this is just.
Well, I think there's gonna be some critical things that come up that we might have to address, that we just need to keep meeting.
I assume a lot because we talk to China all the time.
Yeah.
And we assume even the public could be on it.
Right.
If they wanted to join the meeting and everybody's face pops up on the screen and we can have a conversation, it's like we are looking at each other.
I just had a church meeting like that.
Did you?
Yeah, it worked great.
Yeah. And we, as I say, every week I'm doing it with China, we're doing it on WeChat now, we just, China outlawed Zoom.
And I don't have any, I don't have any problem, I just haven't taken the time to learn how to use it, so.
It's not, it's not difficult at all.
After the meeting, sure.
You just send the link out to anybody who wants to join it, it could be the public. They click on the link and, uh, join meeting and they pop up and.
Looks like we got, looks like we've got our subject matter expert.
Yes.
Put their phone on, I can always call Sheldon if I have one.
Is it, is it through a phone or is it through, um?
It can be through your phone, your computer, if you want, anywhere you got Wi-Fi.
I'm fine with that, Ben, I mean.
Well, it's, it's, it's a way the public can join in too, cause all they need is the link.
Right.
And they can be right there and be part of.
So planning board, zoning board could do the same? Potentially, that's their choice.
Let me ask our subject matter expert in the, in the public, what do you think about that? Does that work?
I think, yeah, it, it does work, yes, absolutely. I think there's a way to record too, instead of. I think, yeah, it, it does work, yes, absolutely. Um, I think there's a way to record too, instead of out to people who can't.
Yeah, I know there is.
Yeah, yeah.
When I got my degree in, in defense, all of that was reported and posted on.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna put that, I, I, I think you're right, and I think there's, that technology's out there, it's just the whole recording and storage and public document, I'm not quite, I, I'll.
Believe me, if you put something out on the list serve and say, do we have an expert? There'll be experts.
No, what I'm, what I'm saying, Ben, is that, I, I wanna make, I, right now, I just don't want to tackle that part of the processing.
But it's not common, we could just do a trial.
Let's do one thing at a time.
Yeah, let's baby steps.
Do the Zoom thing, get, you know, make sure it works, and we're not gonna have any hiccups. Our meeting minutes still are our official record of, of the, you know, period. And then we can get fancy later as far as storing it or what we do with that, if that works.
Buy that fancy T E and put it up there.
Or a little camera like that, sit right over here.
The, the Zoom all uses your computer cameras.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Good. Well, that pretty well gets what I had in mind here. Um, we haven't necessarily, but I think almost by definition, we know what our critical services are. Fire, fast squad, police.
Yeah, if his house catches fire, we'd send out a virtual fire department.
Well, we got, we, we've, we've, we've got to be careful and have a think about and talk more. And maybe talk more with Chief O'Keefe, especially with the small departments, that we maintain functionality. And I'm not exactly sure, he, he's got some ideas of, of how he's basically limit their exposure.
No, Michael, we don't talk to him.
Well, that's why I really wanted, I wanted.
And Michael's probably the top of the list to, to contact the thing, just because he's.
Exposure, yeah. But I wanted, I wanted him to be in the call with, or here with Margaret too, to, to talk on this more. Cause there might be some ways, sort of like what these guys did, how they staggered, right? Now, I know that Chief O'Keefe and Anthony already stagger, right? But Tom might have some other ideas, he might have some other ideas, how to even stagger more.
I think everybody's gonna think about it.
Right, sure, they'll figure it out, I think I guess I'm gonna talk about it in a public meeting.
I think you're probably right.
I'm pretty sure.
Are there any other critical services? You know, probably the next most impactful one is the transfer station.
Yeah, I was thinking that.
Well, I just got a notice from New Hampshire Municipal and everything you guys are talking about are their suggestions, closing your offices, not open to the public, live streaming your meetings.
I committed to send it yesterday, cause it saved us an hour of discussion.
It would not, are you just kidding?
He, he keep going.
Encouraging other people in the community to send written information, emails and stuff.
Right.
What else, let's see. Don't hold any meetings or hearings that you don't have to. Nothing that's not critical. So that's, that's the gist of it. It rose on with some other little suggestions.
So, so we close down the public, we close down this building, other public buildings. Highway building, so the transfer station.
Close, close to public access.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Right, everything is employees only.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm, I'm just
Go ahead.
throwing a different hat on here.
Please.
Are we able to operate out of the Academy Building because we got a lot of community care stuff going on?
That was sort of the next, that was the next.
Well, it's interesting she said that, cause that's, we have one, one of the yoga renters has decided they have four weeks left on this. They've decided to stop. And then we'll save those four weeks for when this is all over.
Sure.
I think you should encourage the other one too. I think that they should not be having groups at CCL.
No, and I wasn't talking about group events, but we are doing strategy like, um, stocking the shelving that's there for food distribution. We, we've already forwarded phones out, so there aren't, um, people actually there in groups anymore. But I'm in and out, um, for other reasons, and we'd like to be able to use the space to, to accumulate the stuff and get it distributed.
Sure.
Singularly.
It, it kind of gets into some of the critical services really, when you talk about being able to help the people that need food, need food distribution, so I'm, I'm with you. Do you think that?
That's essentially like Town Hall, just beat Patty and.
I, I was just gonna say the same thing. We close that building to employees only and that would be you and.
Okay, perfect.
Is that?
Right, yeah.
So we can include it?
Well, we should. You'd absolutely should.
I'm looking, I'm, we can include the Academy Building, right, as being closed to the public.
Perfect.
But what would the, what would the words that you'd want? How do, how do you want to be able to, do you want anyone to be able to come to pick stuff up or?
We're not, no, we're gonna distribute. We're gonna, we're gonna just throw stuff on the porch for people. They're gonna tell us what they need, we're gonna take it. We're not encouraging people. Well, we haven't gotten that far yet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're in our planning stages and they are talking about it this morning, uh, later in the morning, so um, I'd like to be able to just alert them to whatever you guys decide you want, how you want to handle it, but it wouldn't be group activity, it would simply be, um, donations coming in and going back out from that central source for us. Uh, so far, I've been the only one in and out of there, cause everybody else is holed up because they've been traveling, so it's just been me. And Matt, he comes out.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so you're okay with closing it to public? So that takes, and that, so that takes care of the other
The other yoga.
exercise upstairs. Yes, ma'am?
I just have a, a question about how people who are not computer savvy will get information.
Yeah, so.
That's right.
Yeah, so that was on, that was on, that was. No, 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 it's.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Everyone thinking is a good thing. And so I think we're gonna have to do both. You know, a mailing of whatever we come up with, we'll have to do a mailing and put it to the list serve for that exact reason. Thank you. All feedback is welcome, Barbara, always.
Can you separate who is, who doesn't have access to listing?
It may be.
It could save a lot of money if you only.
Yeah.
I think we could probably get really close.
Separate what?
Oh, figure out who doesn't have the serve versus.
You, you, you send out a message. If, if you don't have access to the internet, email us.
Yes. I think.
Okay, let, I'm sorry, this, this one, this one I think.
Call me.
This one.
You know, you can do a postcard, it doesn't cost a lot and you make sure you get everybody.
That's right. For, for this, for what we need to do, I don't, I think it's important enough that we'll spend the money to do a postcard. Go ahead.
No, I was just saying, for, for the, for the times, uh, if it costs a little bit more, so be it.
Exactly. Okay, so while you were out, um, we basically came to the decision to close all the town offices, buildings. The essential services that if anyone needs them, and they'll, we'll encourage them to do it electronically. If they have to do it, they can, by appointment, that each individual department head will basically work their departments as a C F I for access. We decided that we'll let the, I think we decided that the planning board and, uh, zoning, P Z A, those two will decide themselves whether they need to meet.
I'm not fully on board with that, but I know that you want to do that.
Well, okay, well, I, I'm just, I'm, I'm a little bit uncomfortable, cause they're supposed to be separate, but we're taking away their
Venue.
Venue. And so, so it might cause, it might cause for them to get creative, uh, which is a good thing. So basically, we're, and also what we decided is that we'll basically probably be Dina and I every Thursday until we figure out if there's any, if there's nothing urgent for us, then we'll, between the four of us, we can always cancel or postpone the meeting. These two guys will be electronically, Ben's gonna set up Zoom. And we're, and we're gonna try that.
I, I haven't initiated a meeting, but Sheldon, who is on our other team,
Yeah.
he could do that for me.
I'll, I'll take a read too, Ben, just in case, but I'll, I'll learn off on it this week. But our backup is we'll just call in and we'll, or we'll call out to you basically, cause I, I'm almost certain I can do a conference call on this one.
Well, the beauty of Zoom is any of the public that wants to be part of it can be part of it.
Right.
Right. And that's, that is good.
Just click on the link and.
Yeah, but the one thing I read is that if we decide to have a meeting, it's still, the access has to be where they can sit physically in the room. That's, that, I read that very clearly.
Cause not, not everybody can Zoom.
Exactly.
That's why you have to give them the opportunity.
They got a window, they can set some windows.
So anyway, so.
That's what you'll have to do.
So, so, you know.
They can stand at the window, I guess.
So let me, um, let me just ask Chief O'Keefe, did, did you come up with anything that Margaret needs to speak with us more on?
Not Margaret, but I probably need it on public.
Okay. How's your schedule this morning? Can you hang tight for a little bit and let us get through some of our?
Yeah, I'll just hang on a listen.
I'm thinking. We've got more, these other items need to be discussed. We took care of, we took, we basically taken care of this. I think we're pretty good with critical services. This is a question, we need to talk about this.
Yep, that one's more important than that one, I think.
What do you mean, say fire hall for?
Oh, it, it was an idea, well, what if, what if in, in two months you need, I'm just making up a scenario. Bed space for someone that you wanted to isolate. Before you tear down the fire hall, do you want to think about, do you want to think about keeping the fire hall for something? I don't know what that would be right now, I don't, I don't, the crystal ball is not that good.
Tear it down till May. May or later, so you have some time to think about.
Right. Good enough.
Are you thinking of like an emergency personnel type individual?
I don't, I don't know what it is, really, I, I, it's, it was just.
I mean, I would think that we wouldn't want our public people, I mean, if we, if somebody has to be quarantined, I don't think we'd want them in that building, given that our fire trucks and apparatus are still in there.
Yeah, so this is really thinking, they're, they're, they're working on moving them out.
Months away.
They're, they're working on moving them out, so that building, whole building becomes free. And, and, I take it to an extreme. You got a problem, different communities, maybe it's not even our communities, hopefully getting the Corps of Engineers to come erect a portable hospital. Well, if you had a building that was already erected that could work for that, that that's, that, you know.
I thought the school was our emergency shelter and then the ski way, so.
It is.
We have options.
Okay, we do.
Okay.
And better ones.
Yeah. And again, I know Mike Monday just told me this morning, May first.
Okay, well, like you said, we don't, we don't, we don't have to, there's stuff still there for now, so this one's, this is just sort of on the.
Yeah, because, you know, their school's closed and they've got a lot of space.
If it's that much so that we're trying to house that many sick people, the school's not gonna be open, so, right.
Well, yeah, but you might end up with needing a lot at distance too. So, I don't know, I, I don't have the, it's just, it was just a.
Let's keep it on the back burner.
Yeah, right. I sent out, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to finish up with this while we're all thinking the same way. The employee time away benefits use existing or enhance, so I sent out a, um, a brief, there were, it was item number four and five. I'll pull it up if you don't have it in front of you. I didn't, I, I didn't send it, I sent it to Dina.
Oh my God, four and five on what?
I'll show you, I gotta get it in front of me so I can speak.
So.
More eloquently. So you didn't send it?
I don't know what you're talking about. I got, I have your list of tasks.
Hold tight, hold tight.
And then this little balloony thing.
Okay, okay. Yes, you did. Thank you for that balloony thing.
What is that now?
Yeah.
When did you send it, sir?
I'm looking for it. Give me a minute.
Okay, so.
Unfortunately, like everyone else, I didn't did.
It busy?
Well, you didn't need it.
I feel ya.
Okay.
I'm gonna need a little time for a second to find it. I think it was from N H M A. And it talked about, yeah, he probably did, Steve does not bring it, but he sent it to us.
But I have a suggestion that might help in the future.
Go ahead.
If we don't respond all, if you want to send something out, Ben wants to send something out, I want to, we can send it to the four of us and have it that we can look at and think about to discuss at the meeting.
Right.
And it saves Dina from having to filter everything and then resend it.
It does. The only reason, the only reason.
Female service.
Lime Wireless.
So.
I have no clue what you're selling.
Almost goes to the first one. I forget which one.
I'll, I'll tell you a second, sorry for everyone for the operational delay. Oh, I think it was the business review. So, I'll just read to you.
Do you want to send it at the same time?
Sure. Hmm?
I'm whispering.
I heard you say that one.
Get to it.
Oh, okay. So it was like not done during the day yesterday?
I don't. But I, it's not important now. I'll even send it to you again, Dina, so it's up top.
Thanks.
Ben, are you logged in?
Yep. Things are working.
So it's, it's basically, um, from the New Hampshire Business Review, it says, are you prepared for the virus? And what caught my eye was item number four and five.
You sent it?
I just, I just did, but I'll read you.
I got it.
So number four says, if it, if I require employees to stay home or my business temporarily shuts down or slows down, do I have to pay my employees? So the person that's giving this advice says, complicated again. In New Hampshire, salary employees must be paid for the entire pay period in which they perform work. But more than, more than that is likely, is not required. Depending on your policies, and so our town policies would trump, uh, employees might use sick or vacation time to avoid losing pay. Temporary stoppage of work may also mean employees are eligible for unemployment benefits. Employees may, who actually become ill, may be eligible for workers' comp, inside thinking the federal government's, you know, working on that. Next one on five was, what if employees refuse to come to work or to travel to low-risk areas? OSHA rules state that employees may only refuse to work if they believe they are in imminent danger, which is defined as a threat of death or serious harm. Most work conditions in the U S currently do not meet that standard. You need to look again and on case-by-case basis at your workplace and whether the risks there are heightened. So it just sort of gave some guidance and some thinking around, um, and I think at the very bottom, they had a disqualifier saying that, the person that was given this advice was this, uh, law firm's litigation department and chair of the firm's employee law practice group in New Hampshire. I mean, so she's, you know, attorney who practices mitigation law, uh, in New Hampshire, so I thought it was good just to hear before, or look at before we looked at, um, the employee benefits aspect of what we're, what we're doing. So I think what I heard from the highway department, they're still in the, we're gonna go to work, but put in some more precautions. I'm hearing that generally, generally the same for office workers, since we're gonna close the building. So I don't know if we've got as much of a challenge there, but if it does come about, I guess the question really is, for now, do we just stick with our existing relatively benefit, benefit, um, um, beneficial benefits? You know, we've got an enhanced package of benefits for people that.
I, I think we stick with our package and deal with what comes. We can anticipate what comes, but we'll still be. We can anticipate what comes, but we'll still be here solving problems.
You can't anticipate because everybody's situation will be different.
Right.
And you have it, and it's spelt out pretty clearly in, Primex has, Primex has sent some workers' comp information.
I've read that.
Primex has sent unemployment. I just got from town council some suggestions on if an employee is sick, if they're quarantined and not sick, certain things that you've got, I will send, and so you guys can all read them and think about it, and then, God forbid, if something happens, you can.
Case-by-case basis.
Right.
You're aware of that.
Yeah, and so though, I think our attorney's advice is gonna follow the same long lines as what New Hampshire advice has been so far as far as if people get sick.
Yeah, I just printed this line, so I haven't had a chance to read it.
I've read through, I, I'm, I'm just familiar with sort of the print, the deep, I've read most of those things, so.
The Primex.
Um, so what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is this, is that right now we're gonna, we're not gonna consider enhancing anything, we're gonna use existing, existing, uh, time away, sick pay, vacation, Primex described, um, situations as far as our employees go. Yes. It's a statement, looking for head nods.
Yeah.
I think we're gonna take it generally as existing benefits, but we are gonna look at it on a case-by-case basis. We do not want, depending on what occurs, which we have no idea what might occur, we do not want to leave any of our employees hanging.
No, that, that, that's what I said.
So.
But on the other hand, if you change right now and say everything's existing, you know what, we're gonna change for, then you're giving people ideas.
Well, I don't even think it's giving people ideas, I think you wait to see what's happening, because otherwise.
We may not have a single one that goes, has to go out of center.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be dream?
Right, okay, well, I put it up there because it was something that I thought was good for us to talk about, and we got both there, so I think generally, except for what Chief O'Keefe has for us, I think I've mostly gotten my arms around directionally where we're headed.
We did miss our public hearing at nine thirty.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll talk about that in a second. I, you know, unfortunately, for where we're at with the response to the virus,
It just takes months.
There's, there's, this, this was more important, so.
NHMA, NHMA just gave you advice to only do what was reported.
Right, so, you know, I'll, I'll take, I'll take my lashings, I'll take my lashings as they come. You still hanging tight with us? So, I'm gonna recover slightly for the nine thirty public meeting that has to do, that has to do with, it was the recommendation from the Energy Committee to accept, correct me if I mispeak, uh, five thousand dollars from the Lime Foundation to enhance the street lights from an energy perspective, only from energy perspective, with changing out the.
Thank you.
High, high-energy sodium lights to LED. And Mark Bolinger put together an email last night to Dina and I that basically runs through all the reasons why the whole project is being challenged, mostly financially. Things are falling apart as far as what he thought the, um, rebates were gonna be and how much things were gonna cost, and he hasn't been able to get the streetlight provider to give him good information. So he's not ready, in a nutshell.
Sounds like they don't wanna do it.
Well, he's, yeah. But I'm, I'm thinking, Dina, we don't, all we have to do is just say that we're gonna postpone that decision. Now, now, the Lime Foundation may have put a deadline on it.
They did, and, and I told Mark that quite a while ago, but, um, everything has to be reported back to them by May twenty ninth. So, my recommendation would be to say thank you very much for the money, but we're not gonna accept it now. And that's what the, I would hope the Energy Committee would do and say. And when they are ready, they can resubmit another proposal and go from there. Because if this gets hanging around for a long time, it tends to get forgotten or misplaced or, and Mark was okay with that.
Yeah, I, I think.
In his email.
Yeah.
At least I thought.
Yeah, he didn't specifically say that, but I think, I think he'll accept that.
I don't think he said. He did say if you didn't want to accept it, but that's okay.
No, you're right, he did.
So basically what I'm hearing is we don't want to accept this five thousand dollar grant.
Right.
At this time.
At this time.
I'll move that, we don't accept it at this time.
Second, okay, good. All favor.
Aye.
Okay, so Dina, you let the Lime Foundation folks know and Martin?
They can very much.
And there's another one, outstanding error flashing light.
That's actually on my, you're right.
And I think we should consider not accepting that one as well. Because there may be things that the Lime Foundation money could be used for in light of this corporate thing.
I had a different thought, but I hadn't thought about that, Ben. So we know if.
There's a deadline on that as well.
Right, well, there's also a deadline with the state, and then knowing that we're gonna do it for when the paving happens, when and if the paving happens, if it stays on schedule. And so we miss an opportunity, savings-wise, to have the state provide the ADA accessible platform while they do the paving. So my thought was to basically get the engineering company pay, accept, accept it, have the engineering company do the design, the permitting with the state, so we can tell the state that we are gonna do it, and basically have everything, the landing, if you will, for the ADA part of it, and we should have money left over after that. So that, say next year, we get the money to in-town budget or somewhere else to do the installation that we're ready to go. But I hadn't thought about whether they might have for other places that they might want to use the money. So, and they may, the Lime Foundation may not be happy with not getting the primary donor.
Doing half of it.
But.
I, I would delay it. Nobody's been, it's not the best of circumstance, but it's work.
Right.
Twenty mile an hour speed limit down there, and it's cool when the lights flash.
Yeah, I, I actually think it's, I wouldn't use that justification, I think it's actually gonna be a lot more effective. All the data from the state DOT suggests that it's a significant improvement in safety. I mean, that, I think we've seen that almost by default, by the towns around us, they've, they've almost, you can almost say they've almost saturated handover with as many as they have, that you almost get a little bit, um, blinded, if you will, by having too many sometimes, but I think having one still gets your attention. So I don't wanna, I don't want, I, I don't want to.
Do we have to make that decision this week? We probably should make it soon, if not this week. Because I, I hear what Ben's saying, and I agree that that money might be spent somewhere else, but I kind of agree with you that if, if getting that kind of infrastructure, the base of it in there at this time, when we can get more done for less, seems like a good idea.
Well, you might wanna get back to the Lime Foundation.
That's what I'm thinking, Ben, go ahead, well, they haven't sent us anything.
If you go to your room and find out if.
If that's okay with them.
Well, they sent us, they sent us, they sent us that they are.
She called me and told me, but I don't think that we got anything in writing, we didn't get, we didn't get anything like that.
Okay.
That I've seen.
Maybe it was just the email.
I got a phone call from Jennifer.
Yeah.
And, um, saying that it was twenty thousand dollars and and that, uh.
Well, let's double check.
Well, Debbie mentioned a letter, so. What letter?
This is the letter that they usually do.
They didn't mention that flashing light in there.
No, this is the Energy Committee one.
Yeah.
So if we've gotten a letter, I don't know, I'll have to.
Hold tight just for a second.
I would have opened them. I mean, it comes, it doesn't come electronically, it comes in, in the real mail.
Right.
But either way.
Well.
Lime Foundation offered a grant of twenty thousand dollars, no funding in the budget at all. We decided last week, the board will get what they can be done with the twenty thousand and look for other grants or funding next year.
Right. But, the question had not been asked to the foundation of.
Right, if we could do that.
If, right, if we can only put the foundation of it in with that twenty thousand, are you okay with that? Because the project won't be completed till more money comes up.
So why don't we just ask them?
Yeah.
And if they, if they decide they're not interested in that for other reasons, then we got our answer.
Right, and they'll be getting together soon, so that it's a good time.
Maybe they will, maybe they won't.
Everyone okay with that approach? One more Dina's to do. Okay, I did, I really did want to spend a lot of time on these smaller ticket items, so, Dina, what else do you have that you want to push across to us?
Um, well, I have your resolution for the from-town meeting that can be signed. I have the corrected deed.
Oh, excellent.
I have, um, the land.
Well, just go one at a time now, please.
Oh, cool, I don't know how much you want to do.
So, well, we'll see, the corrected deed just means.
It's just a signature.
It's the same deed, it has a different acreage, I mean, quoted, that's right.
Yeah.
And, um, so there's two here, and it's been reviewed by town council, so it's all set. If you'll sign over some, please.
So it has been through town council?
Well, it was before, but yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna slow, slow down for a second.
You want this back?
No, I just want to talk about where it's gonna go.
Margaret's going on to another conference call, she's.
Right. At eleven. Um, so, so Dina.
Yes, sir.
In the past, when we've worked these, we sent them to.
I would send it back to whoever sent it via email.
Well, it started with Kathy.
Ufrich.
Ufrich.
Yeah.
But I think we should also CC, um, the two senate, senators departments. And Ben, if, if you'd like, we can, we can also CC the government, governor's office.
I think we should.
Okay. They have a straight line.
And, um, let's CC to Bill Malcolm. Since he's representing us on some of those things. Just so you know, we saw him. And Kathy, of course.
Yep.
Okay, so then, um, with the deed, Dina, you said it has been through legal?
Yes. It's the same, essentially the exact same deed, but it says three point six.
Point six, instead of three point seven.
Instead of three point seven.
Okay.
And then we have a Mylar, so once, once we get the other signatures.
We'll be able to process it in the county office.
The deed and the Mylar will go to Raptin, and it will be all.
Done.
Up the show.
Okay.
Break out the champagne.
Yeah.
Got that done just about the same time we got the road finished.
Almost already done.
I don't, I don't. Details, details.
Okay, and so now this is the quick claim deed for the land swap for the fire station. I got a lot on my list on this week.
Yeah, so with that, Dina's gonna develop a way of tracking all of our actions for two thousand and twenty. And we'll just keep a running action item list and try to prioritize them, especially now since we're gonna meet in some different manner. But then she swats many things away faster than we can. Humanly process the letter. Just keep on going.
Okay, so we changed the deed. The survey reflects an original three point seven acre easement deed and a three point six acre lot. Would you just run by Laura and see if we need to do that one more time?
What do you mean?
Go ahead.
Which I, you know, okay.
Three point six.
Right, okay. The plan that we have.
This is not the plan that's going.
It only references a three point six acre lot?
But there's the other, yeah, anyway, she, she addressed that, so I'll explain it to you after. It's a, it's a complicated explanation, because this did go to her.
The easement went to her, yes, but.
And the plan, and the plan electronically went to her and was explained to them, so.
We need to make sure it's right.
Yep.
I would like to see it.
Yep. There's markers where, yeah.
So Dina, just.
Uh huh.
What exactly are we gonna do? What you're just talking about, plus.
You've already signed it.
I know, but I want to make sure what I signed is correct.
Here, would you like to hold it, and then I'll double check with Laura until.
I'm just asking, no, I'm just asking.
No, I'm going to follow through with Laura and answer Judy's.
And then, and then that email is less.
Absolutely, okay, thank you, that's what I was looking for.
Geez, wow, I actually had room for two signatures.
Mm-hmm. Does, it's not nice.
Who drew up this quick claim deed?
Brett Ryan's attorney and Laura renewed it.
I think I learned my lesson, I have to give it to Judy first, man. Because this is, well, to be fair, this is her area of expertise. And I mean, to be fair to myself. Secret to success, surround yourself with good people.
Who is Brett Ryan's attorney?
I can't remember who this is.
Jamie Odi?
Yeah. Does Mules Olston in the holster? Say that right?
I'm not sure.
What else?
The truck.
The truck, the F two fifty.
The maintenance truck.
Maintenance truck.
I have a quote.
Yeah, so given, given that the company that we talked about earlier was the one
I have a, right, I have a quote from another.
the highway had problems with. Go ahead, Dina.
From another company.
I was just introducing.
Sorry, I thought we had already done that. For four hundred and thirty-two dollars more, because it's two months later than when the original quote was given. But as long as the board is supportive of me going someplace else, I'm happy to say to them that they need to get rid of that four hundred and thirty-two dollars and that the town can purchase that truck from them.
A different dealership.
A different Ford dealership, yep.
Yeah, so, it's hard when everything is like.
Right, I know, I know, I think.
But, so basically, we have a quote on the maintenance truck.
Well, we had the.
Purchase was approved at town meeting.
Right.
And, um.
The company that we, the company that we were gonna do business with.
We think we don't want to do. We think we don't wanna do business with, so we're going shopping for another one, and it may cost us four hundred and thirty-two dollars more.
Or may not.
And, or it may not.
Okay.
And the vote at town meeting was monetary, it wasn't, it wasn't.
It wasn't the place.
There, you were.
No, I understand that, I understand that, I just was trying to follow the cryptic conversation. I'm slow, you know.
I'm just making it clear for the camera. So.
Yeah, I'm just waiting for Judy to catch up.
Yes, I get it.
So you two have caught up already, if she had a few less names.
You're channeling my brother, he's right with you.
Thank you.
So I think the only question that is out there for this maintenance truck is, are we basically allowing Deena to go negotiate the deal down?
Yeah.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anything else pressing on the agenda, I'm not seeing yet.
Kevin?
Did you?
Yeah, just a sec.
Did you wanna do the minutes, or you wanted?
We're, we're gonna come back to response stuff, so. We could do yesterday's minutes from the recount.
Did somebody keep the minutes?
Yes, Judy did.
Oh, perfect, I can see him, Deena.
Aye.
I'll move, so that's written. All in favor?
All right.
Yep, and it's about then.
I was just.
Oh, okay.
Minutes of March twelfth.
I was going backwards, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. I thought I had sent this to you.
There was one, there was one. So anyways, what's in last week's minutes, please?
The twelfth, I'll move them.
Second. I only, I only had one typo.
Okay.
I think it said, for acres, it's just a misspelling.
It's not a change to the minutes, so there you go.
Just, just go look, just go look.
Just making me pointing out that I didn't spell it right, thank you.
Well, and I didn't catch it, so there you go.
And you didn't.
Judy, did you have any structural changes?
Nope.
And somebody.
Yeah, we did, all in favor is written with, did you have any changes at all, Judy?
From what was sent out, no.
All right.
He doesn't know our system.
No, he doesn't.
We'll just keep that secret, it's a girl's secret.
Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. Did we get pretty well caught up?
We are.
End of the world in Gordon.
Okay, great. Okay, good. Hi, Bill.
Good morning.
Hi.
I'm down for a couple things. One was basically was, we started producing these two-one-one information cards yesterday, and I'm, had stopped by to pick up the rest of them for beginning of distribution. But I also wanted to see if you could follow up on my request that I be given permission to post to the town website when Dave is not available, at a time in which I could then, see if I could schedule something with him before this weekend hits? Because as you know, we're, we're, we're getting updates and, and things almost hourly.
Yeah. Yes, I, I actually support the, it's, and that was, thank you.
I had it on my list.
Yeah, I had it on my list too, but I was just kinda forgetting, so thank you. I think it's a good idea, if, if, for nothing other than we get one more person that's got the skill set.
Yep.
To be able to do it. Did you happen to talk to David about it, Deena, or have any? I seem to remember I, I broached the subject with him, but I, and I don't remember any pushback.
Yeah, it's interesting, 'cause I was talking to him about Jordan learning.
Right.
I don't, I don't remember.
Okay, well.
Talked about that.
I did have a brief conversation with him, and he does not have a particular issue with it, other than the obvious one, which is you need to provide the approval in order for us to go see how we would do it.
I.
Yep, I.
I'm done, done?
And either Dave's computer.
Thank you.
Is he in?
He'll be in at one.
He doesn't, well, well, the, the beauty of it is, he doesn't have to use.
Even be in here, he can access.
Any computer, he can access it from his.
Excellent.
Right.
His laptop or home or whatever.
You know, we then need to go in and see how this web application is structured, so that, I mean, what I'm looking for is just limited accessibility to those areas where we would be posting things.
Right, right.
I don't need access to the whole site.
No.
But that and, and remote access would allow me to do it, and, and again, because if everything else is going on, it's, I'd rather he continue to do it when available. I would just like to be in a position where I could back up and do something.
Friday night, Saturday, Sunday.
If it's, if it's time critical.
Yep.
And he's not available.
We appreciate that.
So that'd be great.
It'd be awesome.
All right. Of course, I've got a conference call at eight o'clock.
Right.
And.
Well, David's not coming until one, so you can just touch base.
Well. I'm not gonna be done with, with that until at least two, so.
A three-hour conference call?
No, I said, my conference call is at one.
Oh, oh.
Well, after you're done, just give him a call, and you guys can set something up.
Yeah, and when, all right, and, and if you'll get the word to him that you guys are all set with that, then I'm good to go.
We will.
Is there any chance, Deena, that I can pick up the rest of these guys? Because I'm out and about distributing them.
They're in the office somewhere.
Yeah, I know, but the office is locked.
Let's take, let's, let's take a, let's take a five-minute break, thank you.
I have keys. Patty's here, I know her door's unlocked. Okay, so let's go that way.
Say Sue's crossed over to the dark side. You're on. Thank you.
So who's moving?
Okay, so I'll go.
You're gonna explain to the camera.
Yeah, so, basically, we're getting ready going to non-public, we do have one more public item to discuss. It's gonna be the building of the letter that explains all the decisions that we've made. But I'd say that before we send it out, we send it to all the department heads for a proof and for some feedback. I think we could CC or include the two chair, well, basically all of, all of the committees and commissions.
Committee chairs.
Yep, and basically give them a short fuse to respond back, so that we can go ahead and execute what we decided. Which maybe brings me to one more public conversation.
But.
Go ahead.
In light of that, but I do believe, at least it's my understanding, that effective with the close of this meeting, we are closing the building to the public.
That's what I was gonna ask, where's the referee sign thing?
Oh, I have it down here.
So, so. That's exactly where I was going, Judy. So, yeah, so timing. I, I am, I'm just wondering if we shouldn't, Judy, get the note out first, and then have it, you know, today's Thursday. We've been doing ours in a second, but I wanna get it, I wanna get it. I wanna get it.
Well, I can make it easy.
I wanted, go ahead, Deena.
You have a meeting tonight that you cannot cancel, so if you close this building right now, you're in trouble. So you should do it effective Friday morning.
We need to let Patty know, I'll go tell her.
Well, you guys decided to close right now.
I told her, my thought was that it would close effective with this meeting.
Okay, so Friday, so Ben, Friday morning?
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Okay, Judy, Friday morning. And then, so with that. Once Judy comes back.
That means your letter will have to go out, and people will have until five o'clock today to respond to it or something, or ten o'clock tonight, or something like that.
Less, yeah, less, yeah, I think, yeah, it's gonna go out right after this meeting, and we give them a few hours. Who we catch, we catch, who we don't, be all right. Yeah, so with that, after we, Sean's been patiently waiting to talk to us, I think it's important for the non-public session. Then we'll come back into public, and we'll work on our information share that we're gonna push out with respect to everything we decided this morning around the office and personnel, and how we're gonna carry going forward. So, anyways, Chief O'Keefe, like to go into non-public, R S A ninety-one. Go ahead.
Eighty colon two L.